I'm gonna, I'm gonna write that note down. We're gonna make that, we're gonna make that speech this week.
Alright.
Speak up. Speak up. Is this still not working?
Everybody move from the bed.
On this eighth of August, two thousand twenty-three. This time, what is called this meeting, or I'd like to invite Nathan Jenkins, he's pastor of Masri Church, Jason here. Okay, well, good winging. If you stand up with me, I'll do it real quick. My father, thank you for your bedevils this summer. Thank you for all the wonderful rain, change in our whole atmosphere, bringing us back to life. Because that's what you're all about. It's been a tough week in our little community. We've had people that had losses, hurt, affected families and other people. We've done, we had a tremendous group of first responders, firemen, policemen, et cetera and so forth, that responded to take care of these incidents. Please be with those gentlemen and ladies. Help them get through this. Give them the help they need if they need mental help, any support of any kind. We live in a wonderful and caring community, and that's what we want to remake. In your name we pray, aw. Keep joining the plate, sir. Alright, agenda item number two is the tenets roll call in determination of a course.
Mr. Peterson.
I view.
Mr. Alvedres.
Present.
Mr. Setzer.
Present.
Ms. Sanchez.
Present.
Mr. Idson.
Here.
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
We have a forum mayor.
Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. I agree.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Setzer.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action to approve ordinance number eighty-eight-nine, an ordinance repealing section thirty-four, Act Two-Fifty, and section thirty-four, Two-Fifty-One, dash fifty-one of the Guyman Municipal Council, for the Code of Ordinances of the City of Guyman, providing perseverance, repealing all ordinance and conflicts therewith, and declaring an emergency. The ordinance is attached. Has any words, Mr. Shannon?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, the Oklahoma Wildlife Commission basically has taken stalking the lake, and this is on recognition, which is to warn that we relinquish all of the duties it takes to check for fishing license, to let the state do that, state to do it, Mr. Johnson, they're ready to enforce the fishing.
Just a little way to clarify. License, thing, license.
I will go ahead and say that, but we plan on stalking him with, uh, catfish and some other type of fish, and we're continuing to try out.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
I make a motion with your ordinance number eight-eight-nine, an ordinance repealing section thirty-four, Act Fifty. Section thirty-four, Act Fifty-One, Guyman Municipal Council, item four.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number five.
We need to declare.
Make a motion, we declare item four an emergency.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number five, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty-three dash sixteen, a resolution supporting the Main Street program in the City of Guyman, Oklahoma. Resolution is attached, and we'll sign that and get that to Main Street.
Well, I'd just like to say something on behalf of that. I was asked to attend, uh, there's a, one of their meetings are held in Guyman, there were fifty, sixty people from different Main Street directors and their county, not council, board members here. I think we've got board members here, and two of them from Guyman, but I was asked to give a welcome today, and also, I did a little research, this is the nineteenth year that Main Street's been existent. I found the old application, kind of interested in reading. One of the things stood out, that nineteen years ago, there was ninety-five percent vacancy of buildings downtown, and I'm sure that's probably about less than five percent now. I thought that was kind of interesting. And it just shows.
Okay. So, do I have a motion? Oh, no, come up.
Thank you for having us. We're here on behalf of the Main Street Guyman Organization. I'm currently serving as the board chair, Kim Smith.
I'm Deirdre Harbison-Humphries, and I'm currently the treasurer, and we would just like to thank you guys, and we'd like to invite you, um, we're having a block party tomorrow night with all of the directors from across the state at Bob's Cowboy Bar, and Fish and Hitch next door is also having a night farmer's market. So, there'll be, um, what's that beanbag toss?
Cornhole tournament.
A cornhole tournament, and, um, there'll be a food truck that's serving chicken fried steak. So, you're all welcome to join us.
What time?
Starts at six P.M. tomorrow evening, yeah. And like, I wanted to echo our interim city manager's comments, Mike Shannon, he mentioned the organization coming to be nineteen years ago, and so we're blessed for your continued investment in this community organization, and we appreciate your funding support, and we appreciate all that you do. I know several of you volunteer with different programs with our organization, and we appreciate the impact that you allow us to make in our community.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And we thank Main Street for making us look good.
It is exciting, nineteen years. I've never worked with Linda Stenad on that.
Yeah, I've got the, if you'd like to see a copy of the old application.
I didn't hear it's exciting.
That was just nineteen years ago. Wow.
Okay, so do I have a, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve resolution number twenty-three dash sixteen, resolution supporting Main Street programming in the City of Guyman, Oklahoma.
Second.
I second that.
Have a motion in a second.
Setzer.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Alright. Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty-three dash seventeen, a resolution implementing water conservation and water waste prevention. Mr. Shannon, do you have somebody or?
Mayor, yeah, well, I'll go ahead and tell the reasons why. This resolution you had before you this evening, uh, we've already had water conservation efforts enacted, I mean, they're a volunteer. Uh, a week ago today, I think Steve, and Steve just sent me an email, our water wells, even though we've, we've had excess of twenty-plus inches of rain, she dries out this whole country pretty fast, and everybody went to water. We was at ninety-seven, ninety-six?
Ninety.
Ninety-eight percent of our pumping capacity with every one of our wells. Uh, I, I make a recommendation, we make this mandatory. Now, the people of Guyman, they, they need to understand, we just have X amount of water right now, and, uh, we're gonna have to make this mandatory where, and nothing's gonna change, but we're just gonna have more teeth into it. Or we're gonna wake up on morning, or one afternoon, and might not have water. It's that serious.
I've had a lot of questions from the public as to why, why do we wait till we're pumping at ninety-eight percent, ninety percent? And I just, I know you have an answer, so I wanted to go on record with that question. Let you answer that.
Well, a, a, good question. I mean, ninety-eight percent pump just popped up out of nowhere, I mean, this time. But, uh, this is, this voluntary, uh, water conservation program's been in effect since over a year then. And it was, it's my belief, in my opinion, that we need to make it mandatory instead of just voluntary. But, I mean, you're right, we were blessed with a sufficient amount of rain, then, within a week. I mean, they, am I, am I right, Steve? The water consumption just went from probably seventy-five percent up to ninety-eight.
Overnight.
Like a month ago, whenever we would get rain, we'd pump that like seventy-five.
What, Steve, your mayor off topic, you had, went during the rainy season, couple, three weeks ago, what was our pumping capacity then?
It was around about six point eight kilo unit a day.
In percent?
And since, uh, even start of pumping, our levels already calmed down to where we're only producing six point six million.
So, we're just, we're breaking even.
My question was more on, we, we've done some infrastructure work with wells, right, this year?
Yes.
And that's, that was what my question was pertaining to.
We, we just, unfortunately, we just don't have the water. Our wells are, been completely redone, they're pumping as much water as they can humanly possibly.
Which is an issue we've been working on.
Definitely.
It's not anything new. We've been proactively trying to find new resources and working on the infrastructure to get this, uh, issues handled. You know, as a city council, as a staff, the city offices, I'd like to go on record saying that for, because I get the same questions, and those are the conversations I have to have with our constituents.
Uh, every other Tuesday, or Wednesday, is it Wednesday, we have our group call with their engineers, hydrologists. Uh, they gave us some real good information, and, uh, the hydrology studies have been performed. There's, of course, they're putting everything, but we've found pockets of water that I've never seen the Okalala have that deep in my life. And I've studied that awful for, for forty-plus years. There's the potential of water being brought into the Guyman here that lasts us thirty, thirty-five years, if that water is there. I mean, the pockets are there, we just need to make sure the water is there.
Well, made it back up just a little bit, and, and kind of elaborated more on what, what Sergio said. You know, we've been working on this water, different options for, for quite some time. It's just one of those things, it's car, there's been a lot of work put into it. It takes, it just takes a long time to get these things done. There's so many moving parts, and I think we're going forward with a, with a good, good immediate, hopefully can, like Mike said, for thirty years or longer. But we're also looking at other possibilities, and believe it or not, right now, Guyman is the talk of the state of Oklahoma, water, of some of the things we're looking at. And so, we just gotta do it and get there somehow.
And to go back to, uh, Mr. Alvedres's question, I wished we could have probably advised, but it just, I feel like it, it just happened overnight. Overnight's a week, but, uh, I mean, it went from, say, probably the seventies to ninety-eight immediately. We could do better. To notify the public. But there again, we were still just on voluntary conservation, so.
Any, any other discussion, questions?
I make a motion, we approve resolution number twenty-three dash seventeen, resolution implementing water conservation, water waste prevention.
Second.
Again, that.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to award Barco's Beauty Salon with the Big B.I.G. grant, an amount of one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents is recommended by the Convention and Tourism.
Hi there. This is the third, uh, B.I.G. grant that we will be issuing, or that was approved through the Convention and Tourism. Uh, so it's gonna go towards the front door and the windows of the building on Highway Fifty-four. Uh, she purchased, uh, this building, and kind of rehabbed it for her beauty supply, I mean, for her beauty salon, and I think you'll have the information. Is there any questions?
You might go ahead and explain the big grant. I was asked again this morning on the radio show.
Okay.
Long story short, curb appeal, to bring more people into your business. This, this grant, basically, that's long story short, to bring a, a better-looking, uh, frontage that makes people wanna go, hey, I'm gonna go get whatever.
Yeah.
In this case, a jet.
Yeah, it's like, it's our facade improvement, but it also includes any parking lot, um, and you can also apply it towards like landscaping, that is gonna be something that we want. So, not landscaping, like, we don't want, of course, you know, uh, plants that require a lot of water. So, that's kind of what we're helping with. And we've noticed, kind of, when we started doing upkeeping our parks and our facility here, and we want that to kind of relay out through the rest of our, our community and as well as our businesses. So, this is a fifty percent matching grant that says, hey, we, we know that it's hard, but we know that we also want to make sure that we show pride in our community. So, here's a grant that you can apply for, that'll give you a fifty percent matching on any improvements you do for the facade of your building.
And all the funds come from Convention and Tourism, which ties right back to economic development for this purpose. Just a small way the city can contribute.
Small way to help out our community, yes ma'am, yes sir.
Private business.
And businesses can still apply for this grant?
Yes, so it's a quarterly grant, so, you know, it's like January through March, through March thirtieth. This next one is due, hold on, let me do April, May. Last one was due June the thirtieth, and June, July, August the thirtieth is the next one due, and we've already got two additional advocate, advocates, so.
And then, um, just for public knowledge too, how often can a, a business apply for that grant?
So, you can apply multiple times throughout the year, but the maximum amount of funds that you can receive for one fiscal year, which is Guyman's, or the City of Guyman's fiscal year, which is January to December, is five thousand dollars. For example, if, um, if she wants to come back and do an additional grant for, you know, like parking lot, the max that she can get is roughly thirty-five hundred dollars. And that's if it's approved, so it's not automatically, it's still competitive. So, we kind of do look to see if it fits kind of what we want. Um, if it's like, you know, if it's something that we wanna make sure that it's gonna attract people, um, and not kind of deter them, or not be too flamboyant, I guess you could say. But as long as it meets kind of the goal of what the City of Guyman and the Convention Tourism is trying to do, then they would rather approve or deny it at that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion, motion?
Make a motion, we award Barco's Beauty Salon with the Big Grant, the amount of one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents recommended by CMT Board, item seven.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Idson.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to approve municipal judge agreement with Dakota G. Lamb Juris Doctor. Agreement's attached, and, uh, he'll be our municipal judge. Any questions, concerns, discussion, motion?
What happened to the last judge?
He moved.
He left?
Back to Tulsa.
Okay.
His love life went south.
I make a motion, we approve municipal judge agreement with Dakota G. Lamb, J.D., item eight.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Setzer.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to approve film and video production permit and location agreements in order for the City of Guyman to become an Oklahoma-friendly, film-friendly community. Yes, ma'am?
So, this is one of the programs that Commerce is pushing, um, and we kind of looked into it, and we've been working on it with Mr. Petty for about a year, just to kind of rough, get everything together. Uh, so what this does is, we become film certified. At this point, our certification allows us to put locations on, so it's either municipal locations that we can add to it, on, on different films that are, you know, worldwide, people are looking for, let's say, uh, Firehouse or Rural Firehouse. And we can put as many tags as we want on every location. So, they type in, you know, Rural Firehouse is in ours pull-up. They can come here, you know, we show as an option for them to come and film here. And then, the city, and we can also put other people, so like, I've talked to Urban Bro, they're interested. Uh, of course, some of our parks, uh, we talked to multiple different spots around. I think we have a list of, Mike, twelve fifteen already, uh, that, that have agreed to do so. So, we're like, hey, these are locations that you can use, and you can charge them, you know, privately, whatever you want. So, we just wanna become certified in that point, where we are on that location, you know, mapping. We're, we're very able to see that. So, what we'll do is, after, if we become certified, we'll load, hey, the City of Guyman's got fifteen locations, and we can add or subtract it anytime we want, and, uh, just so that we can put those tags in, so we're just available. And what we've included in this package is a template of what our permit would look like, of what the City of Guyman permit will look like. So, when they come, they still have to apply for a permit, so we know what's going on, and a location agreement. This location agreement can be used for the City of Guyman, or as a template for other people to use.
Okay.
Oklahoma's been blessed to get millions of dollars.
Yes.
For the, uh, purpose of attracting, uh, movies, or directors, or, uh, to come to Oklahoma. So, who knows? We might be a destination.
And we actually have, and I apologize, Audrey Brooks, um, is gonna be, uh, we're gonna have like a, a community meeting on the twenty-fourth. We just summed it up today with a time, and we'll get everything out together, uh, hopefully by the end of this week. So, Audrey Brooks has actually started kind of a small Main Street ambassadors, and she has like a little, uh, filming, uh, company here. And one of her kids, I believe he was twelve, don't quote me on that, was already in a movie for Yellowstone nineteen, or eighteen eighty-two. So, she's gonna be one of the ones that's working towards, she's been trying to work with Goodwill and Voice City, uh, to kind of get them into this as well.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, great opportunity.
Any discussion, motion?
Make a motion, we approve film and video production permit, location agreement in order for the City of Guyman to become Oklahoma film-friendly community, item nine.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number ten is discussion and possible action to approve pay request number one, in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents to United Golf LLC for the Sunset Hills Golf Course Irrigation Project. Uh, the E.C. Design Recommendation and Pay Request Number One is attached.
Couldn't have said it any better. Uh, our design engineers, uh, said everything looks in order, all the pay results, signed, sealed, notarized, and we're ready for payment.
Do I have a motion, or discussion?
How's that going? How's, uh, irrigation system? How's, uh, timeframe? How's all that going?
I think, uh, while I'm talking to Chris, uh, I think they're about, they're, they're ahead of schedule right now, and, uh, I've not heard any complaints. Good thing. They just had a big golf tournament there last weekend, and I didn't hear any complaints about that.
I didn't hear any.
About the sprinkler system?
Right.
Well, about, yeah, being in the road, that's what I was talking to say. Cause there's still a lot of equipment, a lot of pipe, a lot of, yeah, so. We did have a little snafu there, a lot of open ditches, but contacted the contractor, and they're supposed to win, barricaded those hole. Have they done that? A little perfect, so. Small things, but very cooperative, this is, and the guys know what's happening, so.
So, this is roughly half of the, uh, of the pay.
A lot of this was your, uh, your materials on hand that came in.
Materials mobilization.
Yeah, yeah, just as it states right there.
I think it's going great.
Yeah, I drove by there this morning, and it looked like a little flock of ants on one hole. There were about ten of them, just going at it.
And when were they supposed to be done? Excuse me? When was it, when they supposed to be done? That's a good question. Do you remember what the completion date?
Probably said four or five months entire project.
Yeah.
Roughly, yeah, fifty left.
Uh, they're way ahead of.
That's the weather, I hope. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve, approve pay request number one, in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars, eighty-five cents to United Golf LLC for the Sunset Hills Golf Course Irrigation Project, item ten.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number eleven is discussion and possible action to approve change order number one for an increase of fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars to the United, to United Golf for the Sunset Hills Golf Course Irrigation Project. Mr. Shannon?
As any construction that we've ever been in, there's gonna be changes. Uh, this was kind of, uh, a, a change, of course, but, uh, um, as you'll see on your very first page of the engineer, the background, he made it pretty clear that when it first contracted in twenty-twenty, E.C. Design agreed with prior committees and city officials to exclude additional part circle out surrounding the greens from Sunset Hills Golf Course, designed to some budgetary restraints. Matthew, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're talking about around every green, there's basically two sets of heads in there. You can isolate, if you wanna, uh, just water your green, you can just water your green. If you wanna water just outside the greens and not your greens, it's just simpler to do so. Uh, I, I can't see why it was cut out, because it's just the flexibility of where we're headed, how much water's gotta go in the green, and et cetera. I'd recommend, along with the, uh, the, uh, E.C. Designs, to accept the change order number one, in the amount of fifty-two thousand, whatever that was.
Fifty-three thousand.
Yeah, fifty-three thousand, yeah, there it is. Fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars.
Any other questions or discussion?
So, those greens are gonna be on different timers, basically?
Why don't you come out the front, Matthew?
Matthew, Matthew.
Come out the front if you would. Give us, give us a real quick rundown.
As of right now, we just have four sprinklers that are around the head of the square, right? So, basically, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna get dual heads. So, in each of those plowtons, there'll be two sprinkler heads versus just one. So, there's different combinations that we can do, but generally, what they do is, one of those sprinklers will just be a part turn in toward the green, and the other sprinkler is parted out towards the rough, and the rest of the aroundings of the green, right? So, one big reason why they do this is like, in the summer, when it's a hundred degrees, and we have water during the day, instead of us just having that one sprinkler, that's a full turn no matter what, and we're watering the outside of the green when we don't really want to, we have those two sprinkler heads, and they're just set up to where only the green is getting water during the middle of the day, right? So, in a sense, that's kind of saving water and time, because obviously, we don't want that excess water out away from the green versus just in the green, right? And that also has effect with, you know, diseases in the grass because of overwatering, and it's just, uh, so, as we all know, you know, the world evolves, everything evolves. This is the new kind of evolution in the golf business, is that all these major golf courses are getting these dual heads on the greens instead of just one.
So, why wasn't it originally in the first bid this?
Kind of, uh, money, supplies, uh, the original guys, this was kind of before I came into here, and also before Shannon was here, you know, um.
There's a cost.
Not exact on this, but that could have been so far back that this might not even been one of the new things.
One of the new options.
Well, it was monetary what it was. They, they, they were proposed to do some cutting, that's where they started, then it just fell apart. But, it, we're gonna have a nice system, we might as well have a nice system.
Well, it sounds like this is actually gonna help conserve water in the long, in the long run. So, that's, that's a, it's just, we wanna make sure that we get these panned out as much as possible, because you're right, every time we do construction, we gotta come back and do one of these change orders.
This is a total surprise to me.
Right, right, right.
Well, as Matthew said, one of the things you get into is you can overwater the greens, and you get funguses and diseases. It's pretty easy to do, especially in the heat. And a lot of times, whenever you're doing it, trying to cool down the greens, with the old system, we were cooling down the whole area and wasting water. This way, we can direct the water just to the greens, or if the greens don't need it, and the other part of it, you and the other part of it, we can be selective in what we do. It's kind of like, kind of like buying a Cadillac with an extra option on it and we're just gonna go for that extra option.
And also keep in mind with the current system we have, when I turn a green on, every single head that's on that green comes on. On this new system, we can exact one sprinkler head at a time if we want to. So that even makes kind of more effect when we just have parts in, parts out. If only the left front side of the green is hot or something, you know, we build and target that one sprinkler instead of having five or six all come on at a time.
Via program.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, and um, you, you know, you can manually turn one head on, but you can also set up a program to where the individual head comes on one after another. There's a lot of different.
So it's been a while since I installed a sprinkler system, but I don't remember Toro heads, even though Toro is expensive, being $700 a head. Uh, that's their market value?
But they weren't this big for you.
That's true too, yeah.
I was talking about the bell, the inside guts of the sprinkler, all the components that come with that one sprinkler.
And then we have 18 holes on our course, but I see 76 heads, so it's more than one headed of.
So like I was saying, instead of there being four heads on every green, they'll technically be eight.
Okay, okay.
Um, Matthew, how much estimate, if we lose a green, how much do you think that would cost to rebuild the green if we, if we were to lose a green?
Great question.
Just estimate, rough number? To redo a green, right?
Minimum.
Thank you.
And that's not even including labor either, probably, right?
That's pretty, they're, they're the heart of the golf course. Any other questions, any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve change order number one for an increase of $53,200 to United Golf for the Sunset Hills Golf Course Irrigation Project, item 11.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 12, discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for dilapidated structure at Guyman Original Township, lots 12B4, 25 by 140, AKA also known as 502 North Main Street, which would be the building right across the street from us.
Mr. Mayor, this has been quite a learning experience for us all. Thanks to the, our code department, Chad, uh, these people finally found the correct owner, uh, and it's an investment trust, uh, company that's representing the owner. They, I feel like they've supplied us sufficient enough information that uh, they'll have it cleaned up within the next 30 days. It'd be my recommendation to defer that for 30 days, if not, go ahead and bank tomorrow. They've got contractors lined up. The only thing I've not seen was the, the contractor, uh, the contract for the contractor, but I'll probably never see that, but.
They have estimates and.
It's, it's all here, yeah.
They're gonna handle it themselves instead of us getting involved?
They've made some, uh, some, not demands, but they're gonna need some water and electricity, but code department will take care of that maybe here, so. Hopefully we have that taken care of in the next 30 days.
So, so your staff recommendation would be to give them an additional 30 days?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, what's their intentions at that building, do we know?
Do we tear it there?
It's for sale.
Yeah, it's for, the south, uh, south, right, they're like a 40 dollar.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
But they have other, they have two other buyers just sitting there ready to go.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion uh, to approve order of determination, but uh, extend it for 30 days on the dilapidated structure, Guyman Original, L12B4, 25 by 140, AKA 502 North Main Street, item 12.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for grass, grass and trash for funk, lot one, north half of 2B36, lot size 75 by 140, also known as 912 North Quinn. It's a vacant house, a lot of weeds.
So this property, I started this case back on November of 2022. I have made contact with the owner's husband, Hugh Pierce. Um, up until March of 2023, we had signed 30 days agreements but had not seen very much progress. The last day of the last 30 day agreement we had was for March 15th. On March 20th, I went ahead and issued a citation. Since that citation has been issued, there has not been change to the property. Um, on May 4th of 2023, we had issued a notice to clean. Again, there was no change, so we went ahead and issued a notice of hearing to have a hearing with the owner. The owner's husband, Mr. Hugh Pierce, showed up to the hearing. We asked him what are his plans on cleaning up the property? He went ahead and told us we can go ahead and proceed with the abatement of the property. And I wanted to show, give you these pictures of the property today. And I don't believe Mr. Pierce is present today.
He's not here today.
Um, I am recommending to approve the order of determination and would like to start the bid process. Estimated cost would be around a thousand dollars. Estimated dates would be August 9th through August 16th.
So we are exhausted all avenues with this.
Yes.
So I've got a question.
Yes.
On these pictures, does this building meet our, our standards, our code standards? Is, is the, is the building included in this determination?
So the original violation was given for all the items surrounding the property, not the building itself. There are other violations concurring with the property, but we feel like this is one of the bigger issues concerning safety of the public with all the discarded items surrounding the property.
So I guess my question is, will we go back and try to get the building either remediated and made to look proper for the building or else get it tore down? Because I don't think it meets any of our coding, code standard.
Yes, that is in our plans. There are a couple other violations, but yes, the building is in our to-do for him to fix the violation.
Okay.
One of the other violations being the parking situation there, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, that was brought up to his attention as well.
Okay, any other discussion, questions, motion?
I make a motion, go ahead.
Um, so by doing this, we'll go and clean up just everything around the buildings? Does that include the vehicles?
Yes, all the discarded items. It's mostly scrap metal, mostly what it is, is scrap metal, bits and pieces of parts that he has collected.
Should be bare other than that building that doesn't meet code.
And the vehicles?
And the vehicles, yes.
Cool. Make a motion that we approve the order of determination for grass and trap, grass and trash for punk L1 North Half 2B. Did I have that off? That's it.
Yeah.
Uh, 2B36, lot size 75 by 140, AKA 912 North Quinn, item 13. Second that.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 14 is discussion, thank you ma'am. Agenda item number 14 is discussion and possible action to approve budgetment, budget, budget amendment number two for fund number one, general fund as follows. 14 dot point one is increased appropriations for OHP building roof repairs in the amount of $51,660. 14.2 is increased estimated revenue and apportion, portions for the county AR, AR, ARPA grant in the amount of $17,089. 14.3 increase the estimated revenue for the Jim T. Grant in the amount of $29,656. And 14.4 is increased estimated revenue for the top grant in the amount of $24,000. Budget amendment number two is attached.
Mayor, as, as money, uh, well, the first one on the OHP, that was unexpected. We received the, the building disrepair from the state of Oklahoma to take our investment. We had to grant, so we had to move money out of the term before we, you know, get it budgeted down. Uh, the rest of them are grant monies that are rote coming in, taking, just, we have to put them into the council, we, we just might spend.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve budget amendment number two for the, for fund one, item 14.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Setzer.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 15 is discussion and possible action to approve budget amendment number two for Fund 28 Hotel Motel for an increase of $10,702. Budget, budget amendment is attached.
Uh, there again, moving money where we can go ahead and spend it for the Business Improvement Grant. I think there were three grants? I wonder if it was on the, three, three grants. Staff recommends that do pay.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve budget amendment number two, Fund 28 Hotel Motel, increase of $10,702, item 15.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Setzer.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Got five ayes.
Agenda item number 16 is discussion and possible action to approve budget amendment number one for Fund 82, Airport Authority Fund. This 16.1 is increased estimated revenue for the FAA grant reimbursement in the amount of 600, 620,221. 16.2 is increased appropriations for the final runway taxiway FAA grant expense in the amount of $456,743. Budget amendment is attached.
Good thing about this budget amendment, Mayor, it's uh, money from the federal government.
It's good.
It's good.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve budget amendment number one for Fund 82 Airport Authority Fund, item 16.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Setzer.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 17 is reports from committees, council members, and city manager. Mr. Shannon.
I'd like to go ahead and open up uh, my report, short and sweet. We were informed last week that the highway, US Highway 54, construction bid, it was left. They plan on breaking starting September the 11th. That's a little less than a month away.
We actually have a date now.
Uh?
We have a date now.
Do we have a date now?
September 11th.
Wow.
What staff has been working along, along with the Guyman Chamber of Commerce, is we want to do a groundbreaking. We want to do a groundbreaking, cause this is a $33 million project, largest project ever awarded in the Panhandle of Oklahoma by ODOT, just happening right here in Guyman. Uh, some of the dates, we've throwed out, we're trying to get our congressional district guys coming from DC, our local people. Uh, it'll be sometime latter part of September, but just do an official, thank you very, very much for spending our tax dollars back here in Guyman.
Right, see your plan paid off.
Finally.
That's the first thing, uh, we are, uh, we've got crews out tonight, we will be spraying mosquitoes, there's a few of them left out here. Who? September 16th, Chipping Seal with the CDVG Grant, you remember the grant that we've got? Uh, we have our pre-work September the 16th. Our swimming pool, I'm gonna brag about our swimming pool this year, uh, you just, I just can't say a lot of good things about it, and we've had over 45 pool parties. That's a lot of pool parties. And uh, we had a little few hiccups now and then, but good grief, that's normal. So I was tickled with the way the pool was run this year. Our last day will be August the 15th, I believe, is our last day on that. Uh, I just handed you the police reports and code enforcement and permits and stuff like that, but uh, in the morning, City Hall, uh, we're, we're having a mandatory, mandatory customer service training, we'll be closed for a couple hours. Mandatory. Stepping up our customer service. All right.
Okay.
I'll keep mine short, um, with all the rain we've been getting, city staff has done an excellent job. I've seen, I see nothing but praises about the parks, about the golf course. Anyway, I mean, even the residents, business owners, doing a good job keeping up with most of this, uh, most of this rain and all the shrubbery that grows around it. I also want to thank like everybody in the community that puts on something or other here and there, uh, your little block parties, all that, uh, pool parties and, and invite the public, that, that actually, that leaves a good feeling, you know, in, in the community when there's something like that going on and, and it might go on hopefully for another two months, you know, until, but why does it have to stop? It can keep going and, you know, and into the winter, but uh, city staff and everybody that I've, that I've seen and, and out and about, professional, really, really good and gives, uh, gives the city a good, a good look, so, thank you for that.
Jason, you have anything?
Not tonight.
Not tonight? Josh?
Yes, sir.
Geraldine?
I'll feed off of Sergio's uh, comment on the community events. You know, the, this whole summer, there's been a lot going on and, you know, it, it takes a community to do things like that. And I really, really appreciate people that are stepping up to the plate and doing things like that. Um, even, and like he said, even though we're going into, where school's starting up again, I think it's, it's good to continue that, that whole activity with our community, getting together and doing things. The block party that they're doing down over there with Fish and Hits and Bob's Bar, I think that's great. I mean, it does bring the community together and also brings people into our community to spend their money, so that's awesome. Um, we're going into high soccer season pretty soon. We're already in soccer season, but we're going into high, high throw-up soccer season, so when you're out there by the complex, stop by if you find a parking spot, well, good luck for you. But um, everybody that's doing their part of, of their job on that end, thank you so much on that as well. Remember that you always register with the city to make sure that you do have your, your field reserved, cause a lot of people are out there. You don't want to be having any events or any, you know, practices or tournaments going on when somebody else has a reservation ahead of you, cause you will get kicked out. So um, thank you all for everything that you do, our staff especially as well. Always kudos, kudos to you guys, thank you so much, fire department, first responders, everything that you guys do as well. So thank you guys.
You know, those of us playing the other football on the other side of the town, we would like to disagree and say that it's high football season right now, not high soccer season. That's in the spring, to say. Uh, and speaking of football, first game, August 25th, come watch us. All right, all right.
Volleyball's going on too.
Oh, yes.
Volleyball's pretty cool.
And softball, softball won big time. Undefeated in the district already.
Lot of good things, lot of good things.
I think we're done now.
Anything else? Come on. You're good? Well, I want to thank, first off, and I'm, I'm gonna echo Sergio's kind words to our staff and to the citizens.[1708.94] words to our staff and to the citizens. We've been hit with extraordinary, extraordinary amount of rainfall and the weeds have just been phenomenal. And a lot of folks have stepped up and taken care of their property, helped with their neighbors and their property. So that's been great. I've heard nothing, I have not heard anything bad from anybody. Maybe they hadn't wanted to call me, but code enforcement, I think, has done a pretty good job of handling people through this time because when, when somebody walks out and you got four foot weeds in your yard, it's kind of like, ooh, what do I do? So they've worked with them. So it's a good job done. I think we're on the, on the, going forward, I think that we've got some code enforcement issues we're going to have to address to get neighborhoods where they need to be. There's, we've got some houses that need to be fixed up or gone. But that's part of being in a progressive, good, good caring community, and I think we'll get it done. And I also want to thank, and I mentioned it earlier in the opening, I think we all, if you see any of our firemen or policemen, a lot of the folks have been involved with all the little things that happened in the last two weeks around town. Pat them on the back. Those guys see things, do things that nobody really ought to have to do, but they do because that's their job. And they do it quite well. And we've got a good community because of them. That's all I got to say.
I got one last thing. I'd like to recognize Erica Maddox, the new detective director for the Guyman Chamber of Commerce. It's good to have you on board.
I couldn't see her. She's sitting behind the pole.
She's been a busy lady, why not?
Come up and talk, talk to us a little bit.
The new face.
I think most of you know me on Erica Maddox. I am the new girl at the, at the chamber office, but I am born and raised in Guyman, Oklahoma. So most of you know who I am. Getting my feet wet up in there just a little over two months, trying to make the rounds of all the meetings, meet all the people. We are getting our membership packets revamped and ready to send out. So if you look them out for those, newsletter will hopefully go out, fingers crossed, everything works like it's supposed to. Newsletter will go out September 1st and monthly thereafter. So that's, we're just kind of getting the chamber back into the business of being a chamber, supporting our community and our businesses and our people here in Guyman. So any questions for me?
Exciting.
I'm excited.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah. And, you know, if you have suggestions to help us do a better job, events you'd like to see, holler at me. I'll put them on the calendar. We'll see what we can make happen. Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Get on them, get on them.
All right. Agenda item number 18. Do we have anybody sign in for public comments and announcements? I guess it's over there. Anyway, anybody have any public comments and announcements tonight?
I'm going to come back here and I'll really upset myself because I don't say something about this, but you're right, it's not new. Water conservation and water waste, this is yearly. I've been here a long time and it's not new to any of you guys up there. Every year, every summer, we face this, whether we have nine million or whether we have six million. So, you know, water conservation, water waste, it's about preserving what we have for the future. It's not saying you can't water. It's not saying that, and it's not saying you can't have a green yard. It's saying let's preserve this stuff. So in order to stop the confusion, why don't we say May to October is mandatory, odd and even, and we stop the confusion with the public, oh, is it odd and even now or not? So let me go back to, let's say this. So we know that there's no littering allowed, but yet people still throw it in the alleys. And we're having a hard time getting the people to understand littering's not allowed in Guyman. And we can't correct that problem. So that's all I want to say. Let's stop the confusion with the people and tell them, we're in Guyman, USA, we don't get rain out here. Yeah, keep your grass green, but do it this way. And here's the rules to follow. And I think it'll stop the confusion. And I would like to say that all our wells are running, all our pumps are working as efficient as possible. We do hire professionals. When we see an issue with the GPM's drawn down, we call them up and say, we need you to pull up. We got a problem. We're getting into our busy season. So all our wells are running. They are pumping to their capacity. We just don't have the water filling in the hole fast enough to pull it out as fast as we want it and as fast as people are wanting to use it. So that's my only comment. Just consider it. We do this every year.
Thank you, Tracy. Very well, very well put. Any other public comments and announcements? Any other public comments and announcements? We have no new business? You all right back there, big boy? You all right? Oh, I thought you stumbled over something back there. I didn't know.
Throwing things around.
So we have no new business, so we'll stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Off to football.
Yeah, I thought he'd hit the dirt.
The other football.
to do a little bit of hype.
Have I already signed everything?
I think so. Yes.
All right.
I am going to bring some contracts over for the water storage bid and have you look at them.
Okay, I'll be there tomorrow, but I won't be there Thursday, Friday.
I'm going to go to council. We approved Contract A for, to.